Can't imagine all the young faces are here of their own volition. If you are here for a class government, um I forget the name of the other one. You need to have your paperwork signed off at the end of the meeting. My name is Timothy Friendly, the president of the board. I run the meeting. That's a line on your piece of paper. Um and anybody on the floor can sign on your paperwork at the end of the meeting. Uh Teresa, Matt and Lisa are are administrative team. They're not technically on the school board. Some could be the other cats around the table. We can sign your paperwork. If you forgot your paperwork, take an agenda, we'll sign the agenda. I believe that kind of pest the mustard um forgetting the uh the assignment signed off. Um and thank you so much for being here. Uh motions move the agenda to the table. By Mr. Cologne, seconded by, seconded by, Mrs. Salter, any discussion? All in favor, motion carries. Um I did forget to mention, we do have Mr. Brodin here today, uh virtually on Zoom. He's up on the screen. Um his uh address was published, so he is a voting member this evening. Um so let's not forget about uh any additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda at this time?
There are none at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Uh motions move the agenda to the table. By Ms. Galigan, seconded by Mrs. Russo, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Approval draft minutes, October ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Motion by. Mrs. Riley, seconded by Ms. Salter, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Uh, student board member update. So nice to have you in the seat.
Um we had the PSAT administered last week, Spirit Week was last week as well, on Friday. It was very fun and had lots of student participation, which is good. Lots of item homecoming were also this past weekend, homecoming had over two hundred. Winter sports stand up to open and workouts have been done for work in the sports. Uh we also had picture day and seniors have begun meeting with guidance counselors for college and land school meetings. AOF presidents also gathered their board of advisors. People from local businesses to review courses with guidance.
Thank you so much. Any questions for you? Thank you very much for your report. Uh moving on from there, we have our consent agenda and I will pass this over to Ms. Gal.
I would like to make a motion to adopt sent agenda items F one through L two.
Seconded by, seconded by, Mrs. Russo, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Um, Galvin. Oh, that's right. That's actually back my head. Nope, I I messed up on that. Uh, thank you very much, everybody. Todd. Doc?
I can hear you.
All right, thank you. I just want to make sure we still have.
Yep.
If you've got anyone you need to. Uh moving on from there, we have information reports and discussion board roundtable. Um I'll start with you, Todd.
All right, um I am encouraged that BBS and Schoolhouse have helped us progress even in the cold weather. These aerial pictures are so encouraging of our stadium to be. Um I haven't had eyes on, anything happen with the cement? Did we have any pouring?
Not at this point, but they have excavated a rather large area. Um hopefully they'll well, Matt will probably have more capital project update. I know every time I drive by, I'm hoping to see a forum truck out there.
Exactly. Uh I'm just uh encouraged by that and I hope that it's also with the uh oversight of our athletic director that there is a palpable drive in the school and that there is an excitement as everybody is coming through their first quarter and that um this crescendo is towards the spring. And um the last thing with the board report is I I had I had a conversation, I got called by the regional director, John Burns, and he was uh he brought to my attention that Monticello is not part of Rural Schools Association of New York this year. So that just uh he reached out to me, I said, I would ask. So I'm opening it up to the board and that's all I have. Thank you.
I will, we'll uh Matt was unaware of that as well, so we'll look into that one. Uh sorry, Todd, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Mrs. Salter.
Um I attended the cross-country meet to the Bronx seven. At University National and then also attended our vast whole meet, the cross-country Eldred has all the recognition of the cross-country seniors. Very good.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mrs. Riley?
I'm attending uh elementary school level game of soccer and baseball at Mammoth Field, so maybe um how they're doing their last game for Ace of Sock versus Sunday, West High Valley. And uh from the baseball, it's minors, big pitch, and they're actually in the championships, so they're doing well.
Uh, Mr. Cologne? Thank you, Mrs. Russo.
Yeah, I, excuse me, I attended a lot of the heat of soccer and it's very beautiful to watch them play. Um when I was going down Hamilton, the field looks absolutely just show that table beautiful. Um as many of you know, my face at the garden, garden park, my life. And after a very reflection, I thought that is leading the direction. My husband and I have made some changes that will take by the district. Even though currently we still maintain our home and devil. After careful careful thought of, I decided to step down from the school bar effective November seventh. This is not easy choice, serving the board has truly been an honor. End of lesson. I pour my heart into this burden and think we care for students. I'm getting emotional, sorry guys. Um I've been so grateful that she has to come alongside people who shouldn't say dedication and thank you guys, because you guys are amazing. You guys are the spirit of our school and beautiful, she goes. Since again, by time the board, I tried to serve in honesty, conviction and faith. Being part of this team and working for the good of our students and families has been incredible blessing of mine. I have learned so much and I truly value the friendship, challenges and growth that came with this. Please know that I've done the best I can for each and every single one of you and the opportunity to serve this community. I will continue to keep our district, our students, and all of you in my care and make up less the work you can see you do. I'm glad you would raise them courage and passion. Um, I wrote letters of resignation, most of the vice president and and thank you everyone for your belief in me and I stayed the best that I could and have you all.
Thank you for your years of volunteer service to the Monticello Central School District and community of art. And uh little mark to replace you and thank you so much for all the time you've given to the faculty and students and staff of so. Got a follow up app?
But I have nothing to report, so that I will be leaving. Thank you guys, all you've done for our channel. Thanks, thank you.
Um. So my last weekend half has been a little tumultuous, I had my own stuff going on uh. But I did go to a single football game for half of it. So that went down, down real quick. Um. But uh also I would like to uh be realized a little bit earlier in the evening that um myself and more than likely, uh well Wendy wasn't going to be available, I wasn't going to be available. Uh Mr. Brodin is presently uh working on his higher education. So we're going to be moving the November sixth meeting um to November fifth so that we can be sure to have a forum and keep the business of the district moving forward. Um so our November sixth meeting will be rescheduled for November fifth. Um we'll work out the details with publishing and stuff. Um we shouldn't see that big of a deal. But going forward, uh due to uh trustees prior engagements, um we are going to relocate that meeting. So uh thank you, everybody, for uh accommodating us on that. Uh moving on from there, we have uh director reports. Um lots of information there. Um any questions, comments, concerns surrounding regarding our director reports? This time, um we will be having a policy committee meeting prior to that November fifth meeting. Um. So that will still be going on and I'll pass over to Dr. Evans for the policy committee now.
Thank you, President Crumley, and before I begin, I just want to express my appreciation for this service to the board and for the team with Andy's Russo, which I think your family does. Yeah, and um this evening, uh the board will be acting on considering first readings of five different policies. Four of them are really connected and then there's one distinct, four. That one being the student fundraising activities policy. Uh the board may recall that it has been a public debate, it was a board meeting uh where some board members expressed an interest in revisiting the board's fundraising policy. There were, I guess, in the current policy that several board members that they had an issue with. We brought it to the policy committee. Um they initially had some ideas to maybe first meeting in September, probably something to the legal council. Uh they gave me some better advisement, which is, well, why don't you look at the New York State School Board Association base policy? And then use that as the foundation and as a change in the foundation. Um because in the existing policy, there are some issues like technically speaking, the district doesn't produce funds which are close taxes, but the district itself is not based on the positive activities in the district. I mean, basketball team or people or big program, what happened, fifth grade class, what happened? So uh I brought that back to the policy committee at its last meeting, uh beginning of October. And uh they agreed to moving this forward for a first read. We, so essence, what the board is considering is the base New York State School Board Association policy with one key addition, and that is the publication of calendar fundraising calendars in schools that they are able that way with some coordinated efforts to say, you know, not everybody's doing fifty degrees the second week. So uh that was kind of the one addition that the policy committee recommended. The other first reads are of uh non-discrimination, non-arresting, aggressive policies and regulations that come on the heels of the kind of the overturning of the Biden era, the Title IX policies, which happened back in January. And uh the board of that time throughout the spring did amend that line policy, but there were a batch of other fallen fallen policies that are connected to the Title IX policies that the board had approved the revisions to, I don't want to say in March, but in fact, so. So I provide the board, first the policy committee with those recommended changes and in some substance, the changes are really, you know, we're on wording of just turning to the harassment and moving things from you know, saying under the Biden era sex discrimination or sex-based discrimination to sexual harassment. And in particular, the change to the district as an employer receiving reports or formal complaints of sexual harassment. That's quite difference compared to what the Biden era harassing definition was, which would basically you know, complaints of sexual discrimination. No matter how formalized or how legitimate and the employers, the kind of doing investigation of that, what was reinstated with the the first Trump administration kind of buying banks. So you see language in each of these zero one hundred, zero one one, zero point two, zero one one five, zero one one five par change are in red. They are to be made consistent with our current guideline policy. Change that in the spring. Okay, I provided you with uh the legal, the legal memo we received from attorneys that in February. And these four are on the very last page that have come on page eight. I'll just read it out loud and I don't know what I'll do this week, people, but I think it stays appropriate. The district should revise the following policies to verify that revised policy zero one 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 only addresses the response to report assault, assault, and sexual harassment, takes review reference to regulation zero one one par that will give guessing, that's what these suggest. Okay, so uh those are all probably together, but we're decent. Questions uh regarding the policy?
Um, but we didn't adopt. So during the Trump first administration, I think we didn't adopt, my whole district, not we, I wasn't for that time, did not adopt. You guys waited for the Biden administrations. I was not going back to anything, we wouldn't have done at the beginning.
No, the board did back and straightened up. I had, no, we had a line policy that was up to date when the support rule that was overthrown in January, right, in federal court?
Yeah.
Throughout Biden era, that line.
Right, but the original one, when it should have been adopted years ago, it's never I want to make sure that's
that my policy is current is consistent with the original. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions around the policy? Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Uh moving on from policy, we have capital project updates. Um as Mr. Grohl was saying, uh the field looks fantastic and we have started estimating for uh the uh Fieldhouse Project. Um. That's a little bit, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley. So yeah, um the Ed- Ed Kennedy Field is now done. Uh with football soccer field, all the way out, the track is sufficiently done and it's fed line. Uh it's drainage the way it's designed, it's fenced in. So that feels, uh you know, could be open hell, but it could be played. They're not there yet, but too much construction going on. So that's good news. As we mentioned earlier, we've also broken ground on the uh new stadium. That's great and it could be pictures of dirt. That's, you know, kind of have more realize that, however, um we located a old drainage pipe. Um that's no longer functional, no longer used. Uh Steve Lewis expects that as part of the larger drainage system that now kind of goes through the baseball field set. Um but it hasn't been used, anyone's knowledge for second, that our so this is uh cause for a bit of delay, but what has happened is now the architect, the construction managers uh our owners rep and facilities and the contractor, they determine the fate of that. And whether or not it needs to be removed or somehow negotiated in some way or made better concrete. Once that pipe is reconciled, then we're going to go for it. I think there's a question, you were basically, yes, they can, in fact, they will.
Uh they don't know, but they said they, I guess the mixture depends. At this point, they can't put additives in it to keep it going. Um pretty late, later than what you would think. Um and then historically, I mean realistically, we probably had several troops out until December. That's not that much of an issue. They can attend some new other things to be able to board, but there's definitely some other chemistry they can do with the concrete, so it dries a lot slower and you don't have the cracks and stuff. But that's definitely a longer period.
Well, this is hopefully is to redick up.
You gotta figure out what it is.
Yeah, and it's a drain.
Yeah. Might very well just not go in. Any questions uh surrounding capital project? Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Um oh, on capital project, do we have any uh capital project committee meetings coming up?
No.
Or in line? Because we need to have.
No, but they suggested probably January, February-ish. Once they have a better idea of how much money is remaining, once they won't work on the stadium.
Yeah.
To then make some calls on
How big the scoreboard might be?
How big the scoreboard?
That was for Todd.
Yeah, how big?
How wonderful it can be.
It's gonna be amazing and my Middletown will have nothing on us. We're gonna, that that display board will be video and it will represent those animated gifs that we would have of our students, just like in college games and pro.
We hope for the best. Um so thank you very much, Dr. Evans, for the uh capital project update. Uh correspondence outcomes.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question, the meeting was the policy meeting that we need to?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe, you know, maybe. I will throw it out there and mention it too, but maybe move that also.
Oh, I just assumed that.
It's okay. Is it, so is that a so bold, that's what will happen?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all. So, Paul, anybody?
Um, correspondence outcomes are uh listed off in your uh agenda, it was under executive content. Um upcoming events, uh we do have the uh reason we're having a meeting tonight, it's Thursday, we do have the New York State School Works Association Conference. Um I know Bravo, Wendy, myself, Matt, no? Oh, uh Matt, Teresa, Teresa. Um so a few people there, um hopefully they'll pass along some really good back to you guys. Uh community ones are listed off in your uh agenda, um lots of good articles about the district and the students. Do you have any questions or comments from the public at this time? Um, so moving on from there, we have superintendent of state information, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley, and good evening again, everyone. Uh I'd like to first recognize and congratulate uh our newest teachers who have been attending. And uh first is Lisa Mather, who's a high school education teacher. I don't think she's with us tonight, but the school psychologist, uh Gina Zucker. Is that right? It's time to look at them. Congratulations to the Zuckler as well. Thank you. Uh notes of appreciation uh go out to Ms. Dor. You heard earlier this week, like my report to the board about the New York State Education Department approved uh the high schools proposals for accredited career and technical education programs for business and marketing and hospitality and tourism. Thank you. With the Muscha, uh our teacher leaders and our other, I don't know, Ms. Garland and other administrators, teachers who worked hard to get those up and running. Uh we will be uh presenting the Academy of Finance uh as well as Ms. Dor will present briefly on the C P process at the Sullivan County School Force Association there on November seventeenth. Uh that will be hosted in the Robert J. Kaiser Mills School Library, we'll be spost here that within the board. What's it? Cafeteria, I'm sorry, Robert J. Kaiser Cafeteria on uh November seventeenth. Uh some other updates I shared before uh earlier tonight, just before the board meeting, uh Monticello Rotary uh was meeting with our high school interact club in Monticello High School. Uh this came part of their regular weekly Tuesday night meetings. This came to us from Monticello Rotary, President List Chris, that's in the summertime, and our interactive advisor, uh Amy Ross, the store, and they suggested we're looking for ways in how do our interact club kids get more connected with Monticello Rotary? And again, we'll right out of the week, host the Rotary dinner at our place. So we provided our interact students with their dinner, the Rotarians gave them their dinners, they're doing the practice. So it's a very uh networking opportunity, so I want to thank Ms. Dor, Ms. Ross, and we're hosting that. Uh some other group updates, NISB's put out their position statements for twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh this is important for the board to know because when we get the advocacy uh in January, February, this will be kind of front and center in addition to foundation aid issues. Uh continuing my classroom visits and lunches, I've shared those with the board. We're also uh in the midst of some administrator searches for executive director, deputy personnel, supervisor of special education and director of elementary ed. We're updating the board, the public throughout. And uh last but not least, uh we are doing some uh deep dives on our school level practices around student attendance. So what you see there are survey responses from the school principals. I'll be going back to the principals and directors firstly at our meeting tomorrow uh and looking for some commonalities on, one, how do we identify and notify students who are practical with that. And two, how do we recognize students who have excellent and or perfect? So basically the two survey questions you see there, uh I'll be meeting with our administrators to try to recognize, all right, so we're going to be count practice, be heavy school. Obviously, we're going to hand them to the high school or St. John's. But what are some baseline contracts if we do the notification package? So, four.
Questions for Dr. Evans? Very much, man. Uh moving on from there, we have uh our assistant superintendent for business update information, uh. Ellen's not here tonight, but do you guys have any questions for Lisa? Thank you, Mrs. Bailey. Uh moving on from there, the assistant superintendent for critical instruction, Scarlett.
Thank you, President Crumley. Good evening, everyone. Uh so the agenda tonight, I have the contracts that I had on the last agenda, but we had a date issue with them, they have been corrected. And these are our private school contracts for staff for children instruction throughout the school year. Any questions tonight? I have a comment. I noticed that for the mentors of the My Brothers Program, two of them look like they graduated this year. That case, it looks like two mentors and then I should say, um thank you fellows. So that was for students that graduated the last year, that's what it appeared to be. It's being at the most two mentors that they did that. Oh, they are, right, yes.
Yeah, I'm just checking to make sure that.
I didn't realize when you, because it's paying for stipends, so I assumed that they already graduated and they're on the roll. So there's students that are being paid.
Yeah, they have to pay.
Sure, thank you. Sure, so our fellows get chosen, imagine they were chosen the spring before. Um and then there are things throughout the school year that they're working on that falls under what MBK is, you know, is all about. Um they also attend and speak at um spring conferences of the Albany uh around My Brothers Keeper, and so they have to complete all of those things for to get that stipend, and they're worried that towards the end of the school year.
They verified, I just assumed that they had basically graduated from the ranks and now they're they're taking the torch and creating more fellows, this is what we get, so thank you for saying that. I just thought it was a cool thing that they were uh moving on.
Any other questions for Ms. Scarlett? Thank you so much, Teresa. Uh moving on from there, we have our action items. Uh moving on from there, we have our action items. So let's now pass over to uh. Scally.
I'd like to make a motion, take action items R one through R nine as a group.
Yep.
Right.
We have a second on that? Uh by Mr. Sloan, any discussion?
I'd like to review action items four through seven.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Okay. So I'd like to make, I'd like to make the motion.
I would like to amend my previous motion to take action items one, three. And eight and nine.
We have seven on that? Miss Riley, full discussion? All in favor? Berries? That will approve that.
Yeah, so I'd like to make the motion to approve action items. R one through R three, R eight and nine.
I have a second on that. Ms. Riley, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Um. Can we do four, five, six, and seven as a group?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to. Action items. R four through R seven as a group.
We have a second on that? Mr. Russo, any discussion? That's the next one. All in favor? Motion carries, Scalligan.
Okay, so I'd like to make the motion. To approve action items. R four through R seven.
We have a second on that? By Mr. Stalter, any discussion, Riley?
Thank you, so all of these policies, as Dr. Evans had previously said. Were based upon. The Biden administration and then the Trump administration and the changes that happened. Being that as far as. Um. Issues according to gender. In this right, Dr. Evans has said. Forty seven. To the changes. From tightening on. I'm actually part of Policy Committee and um going through these policies initially. There was lawyer representative, a preference petition for us, so that we could ask questions. And my understanding is that after the word gender. Even though our lawyer is telling us that it's something that should be done to include a. Learned phrase and parentheses. Um it's not required, so. Over and over and over again, after, so I'll mention the four policies, so it's every single one of those. Um bullet point four policy. Uh one uh zero, one hundred, it's in each one. And each two, there's a parentheses after. Gender. And it says including gender, identity, and expression. Again, that parentheses isn't required, it's just recommended, but it's not required as per New York State law. So I am asking. For the board to review these policies. And. Given a moment thought about. What that does. Because if it's not necessary. Then why is it there? And if it's there, then does that make it so that? When your state law maybe changes or is interpreted differently, this is hooking us on to say that. Um generally something different than female.
But. This is a living vacuum, so if New York State law or New York State Title Nine change. We can change this document. Um pretty much at any time. To include inside the parentheses, gender identity and expression. Keeps us in line with. Keeps us in line with. Presently, I believe, our New York State Constitution. And the present New York State Title Nine. Um document. And for our administrators, teachers. To give them a policy that. Technically, if they didn't include those people inside of it. And they did discriminate against them, well, according to the school policy, it's this, but then. We're putting them in line to then be in violation of New York State. And or New York State Title Nine policy. And I'm. I have my own personal beliefs, I, everybody here does, I understand that. But my view of being on board is, we're also here to protect the district from liabilities and things of that nature. And it seems to me that including that in there, if it changes in the future, at that, at those levels, we can always change this document. But for right now, for our administrators and teachers to be aligned with New York State. That's where we live, New York State law and um New York State Title Nine, to leave that out. I think puts the district in a bad position possibly, if that ever did happen and the lawsuit occurred. I look at that as we would pretty much lose that lawsuit every day. And then that puts the district into a very. Ten- tenuous position financially, if we were to lose something like that, I don't know if that would come out of insurance. If it would come out of general fund, I don't know those answers. But it just seems like not a place that I would want to put the district. Aside from my personal beliefs, because that's really why we're here, is to help also protect the district from things like this. And I might not necessarily agree with it, but I do understand why it's there. And to protect the district, I really don't have an issue with it in the way that it is at the present.
Well, are we on a compliant book, well, then, according to the Trump administration, there's two genders that we're putting all that in there. Are we at risk of losing our federal? Federal.
No, uh because again, uh I don't want it to come through states.
It comes from the federal.
To the state. To the state, right, so when we submit our title application every year, we submit it to all. State Education Department, flex and review, use all the state districts title application. Now. The interplay between the federal government and the state government is U S Department of Education, good. So their state education department, we wanna see your uh title application. From their beautiful view, and then the federal government, we take action against the state law. Not both of them.
They can be called mine of the state, even for uh.
Correct, but the state would only, not not us, the state, so the state would only. Give money to us in our title application if we met all criteria. Um. But it's up to the federal government to tell the state that you have to change this, this, and that, and that one application, which it has on. I do wanna clarify, I think the President currently raised, relative to New York State Constitution. Um with the voters uh November twenty four, through proposition one. Which reads uh. The New York State Constitutional include protections against discrimination, quote. By any other person, by any firm, corporation, or institution, or by the state, or any agency. Based on race, color, ethnicity, national origin, age, disability, creed, religion, or sex, included. Sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, pregnancy, pregnancy outcomes, reproductive, all clear about that. So it is now in the New York State Constitution. And our administrators and teachers and members don't have ready access to that, they can find them. But we do have ready access to your policy, for our policy and law. And what's critical for. The work of the administration is when issues come up, let me go look at our central harassment policy, take a look at our title. Whatever it may be, because that is godly, in essence.
But if our attorney's saying that it's not necessarily be in there, then. It's how we're saying we're facing policy.
The, our attorneys are recommending changes in the policy as they are presented.
Yeah, we had a meeting with that, I think that. He recommended, like all things that we recommended that we not follow. And um I'm just curious. Well, it was my understanding, well, the memo that I read. That. That the language is like the ease. And. That's my concept, even though. We might. It were to protect our teachers and our students, right now, we were out of. Time, that follows me with the terminology, right, that was.
Well.
We have to get, even though we're a school that, we're in the state of New York, and New York had the, with its. Same then, and we have to get in line with that, even though adversity don't break it, okay, but doesn't stay drained. And this is what was being mandated, and this is the terminology that's been. You know, and if I'm wrong, correctly from what Tim was trying to say, we don't make the changes that are necessary, we didn't have the proper stuff in place. It's it's our teachers and our students in these situations today are not protected, that's what, that's what makes.
Yeah, so what the attorney, yes, sorry, being, what the attorneys are recommending, right, that is uh our. Federal Title Nine policies that uh were reinstituted by federal judge in January twenty five. Your state laws around uh sex-based, uh sexual harassment. So and then what ultimately are the requirements of the local law for us to, if we do get a complaint. Of harassment or discrimination, how is the district going out investigating it as far? Did you think it's stat about sexual harassment and discrimination? So the the major changes, not really that major, but they are significant. Uh these policies are changing, putting in things like formal. Of sexual harassment, striking this current policy, sex discrimination, and sex-based harassment. But um I think if you look at zero, one, one, zero, one, two, about page one. Top of page two, that really is the essence of all the changes that are on the policy. The attorneys are recommending, our attorneys are recommending policies that you see before.
Right, but we had a conversation with him, he said that didn't have to be. He recommended, but he said it's dramatic with the. And I'm talking about zero, one, one, five.
Yeah, I know, what part is that?
Gender, including gender identity expression, that, I remember this, this was my main issue, he said that didn't have to be included. But he recommended, this is when Jen Holmes is on how he, you know, we have this meeting.
And that's in the current policy, that's true. And they're, I mean, they did strike this. I read of it that he continued in that uh, I don't have a recommendation.
Well, at the end of the, well, at the end of the day, right now, let's just say that. These changes in this present group thing. Don't get it done. Our present policy still has that language in there, along with, I believe, the other language that is getting struck in this policy. Which actually. Makes it harder for administrators, I mean, if you witness anything, now it has to make form of the point. It actually tightens things up a little bit with this new iteration, the recommendation, change in policy. So it actually helps protect the district a little bit more because it tightens things up a little bit. Present policy's pretty wide open, and there's a lot of interpretation. This kind of brings it in, so if we don't vote on this new policy and it's struck down, which is up to the board. Um we actually are now gonna stay with. A policy that still has the language in there, and it's a lot wider. That things can go through, this present, yes, it has that language in there, but it does tighten things up. To kind of narrow that corridor a little bit and help that.
I don't understand why we follow our legal. Done things and that's enough. You know, it's just.
Well, at the, at the present moment, that this is what's in front of the board. You know, that that's kind of where it is right now. Um if the board votes it down, and it has to go back to policy, and we need to kind of rework this again. Then we'll go, go back to policy and rework it again. Um but that's up to, you know, the nine members of the board to vote on it, if it passes, it passes, if it doesn't, it'll. Look back and we'll stick with the policy we presently have.
And I would refer quite a hang, relative to this question about what's on page two, the gender, including gender identity expression. The reason that's in there parenthetically is to. Give people who are reading the policy how gender is defined. Under New York State law. If that, if those parentheses were struck, then the individual would possibly not know how genders will come. And that would lead them to make. You know, incorrect assumptions about the definition of gender in their state. I will certainly follow up with our attorney for clarification on that, but you know that they do not strike. That parentheses, including gender and identity and expression. And zero, one, one, five.
What was the date of amendment that?
February thirteen, so there were, there's a binder, title line models, and you set the board. And then these are kind of connected. To those changes in title law, so the board made changes, or if we so, in title line that update that out. What this does is reconcile differences between. What New York State defines as discrimination and harassment, what's in the policies, those kind of link. So for example, again, zero, one, one, five, R, page five, Saturday, here. Striking sex discrimination and or sex space, changing that to sexual. Striking a title line complaint is warranted, so headline four here to determine whether. Striking a title line complaint is warranted. Changing that to action pursuant to the district's title line policy is required. Goes to, you know, kind of these subtle changes that federal judge threw out and kind of lined, to making that consistent for people.
So, yeah, what's that, what is it just one particular?
Yeah, I'd just like to be clear on my objection, it's not of the policy of the. Describing of gender right after. And before different, of the four policies. And in two sections of policy, zero, one, hundred, it's on page one, it's on page two. So that's, and and I appreciate that we're here to. Prevent any lawsuits against the school for two first reasons, one being taxpayer money, two being. You don't need. That stamp on our school is being uh any negativity towards our school, I I appreciate that. But and it's for me, it's not about a belief structure, it's about, we talked about this earlier, like here. We talked about hypothetical situations, and through that, I did. Not feel confident that this would be a benefit to students who are being called harassers. Or being bullied, or being bullied, or, and I. Because bullying already is. Some of the things are frightening rumors, so okay, we're gonna tell. That people are bullying and they're spreading rumors, okay, but now we're gonna say that. We're going to explain what gender is, that it's not just female, male, we're going to explain that it's all a variety of. Others, you know, other things, non-gender and and other gender, and it just. When I think of the situation and I propose it to our attorney and. It it comes across as, well. We're better protected in this way. I don't see it that we're protecting the title, so that's where I'm coming from, is if there's teeth in in a lawsuit. It should be. Sufficient enough to use New York State law on its own. And not have to put this optional parentheses explaining gender, it should be enough to go by New York State constitution. And you said that it's, it's in there to to write this out, but what I'm saying is. If it protects a child, then I'm on that team. That's where I'm coming from, for, so that protects the taxpayers, protects the school, I get it, I don't want it. Make it so that I'm not um. Obvious in both. Our community, I just, I'm standing on the side of what I think would protect the child more. So thank you.
Your discussions around these four uh. Action items. Action items?
I mean, I don't understand.
It's existing, existing, not present.
It's in the existing policy. So they were seeking the kind of taking that. That was happening and.
Couple of the public policy.
But this new policy, that's, I love the policy as a whole. So. Um, I think we're at the point where we're going to vote. Todd, you're probably gonna have to weigh in on this. I don't know. Can you see him, Emery?
I, I got you. I'm here.
You're probably gonna have to give us a verbal. Oh, there it is. All right, so. We are presently at a discussion for the motion to approve R four through R seven. All in favor of R four to R seven? Todd, are you a yea or nay?
Yay.
Um, opposed? Bravo. I need to weigh our butt. Opposed? Very well. Okay, motion does not carry. Vote four to three. Thank you very much, everybody. Uh, moving on from there, we have, uh. Correspondence. Um, Heather gave us a very nice thank you note. She, uh, received.
Megan?
She was yet.
So it was Wendy, and you, and Megan, and Todd.
Yes.
So that's four.
Yes.
To the three, so just to say it did not pass.
I need five to pass any motion. Uh, so correspondence, there's a very nice thank you note from Ms. Fossil. Um, she received the, uh, Friend of Education Award from the Sullivan County. Uh, School Boards Association. I encourage everybody to read that. Um, I don't believe we have any questions or comments from the public at this time. And then we have a motion to adjourn. Uh, Mrs. LaRusso, second and five.
Second.
Bye, Mr. Mr. Grodin. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.